We do have one public comment card.
Okay, on the minutes, okay. Before we vote.
Eric Preben.
Thank you, Commissioner. Which, where do you want me to, right here? Fine, thank you. So yes, the July 2018 minutes reflect Commissioner Bonner’s submission, and I appreciate that. And I also want to reflect on our discussion that people from the public be afforded the opportunity to be identified as those who spoke in the minutes. And again, we didn’t do it here, and I’m not sure if that’s because the speakers in July didn’t know to request to be added to those minutes. The reason why I bring it up, obviously, is because I came, I think, in March, April, and May, or something like that, to bring to the attention of this body the Miraloma facility was percolating along and that there were going to be some construction decisions and such, as we faced what I will describe as a rising tide of valley fever and coxie in that area. And so those comments were made professionally, I thought, through Mr. Williams and through the Women’s and Girls Initiative, and to as many of the County Board of Supervisors personnel, who I thought would be appropriate, in the Sheriff’s Department, to make that clear that we should be very cautious as we move forward with any plan to bring women from Los Angeles, once incarcerated, into an environment where there is a greater incidence and a higher vulnerability for women of color, women of Filipino-American background, and pregnant women. So obviously, in an incarcerated environment, sometimes you have a chance to check to see if you’re pregnant, sometimes you don’t. So this is a bad, unfortunate turn of events that is completely inconvenient for a plan to incarcerate women there. So I would just ask that the Public Health Department step forward and acknowledge, today even in LA Times Essential, there’s an article by Cal Matters on September 25th about the escalating valley fever. But the valley fever, and I will leave in one second, is not the only concern. Obviously, the biggest concern is the burden on families and ordinary women and their families to get to this facility if it ever moves forward. So that’s why we ask that the state and the governor, who’ve been contacted about this, including the state Public Health Department, so that they can redeploy the $100 million in AB 900 money to a facility. There are many suggestions made by groups who have spoken to you, and I will just simply say I appreciate the leadership on this at a time when women, more than ever, need to be protected, especially in this context where we do not want them sent far away, deported, if you will, to a far, far away. So with that in mind, I would like to submit this to the minutes. It is a letter that was sent to some county folks, and if you could simply add that to the record, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and that topic is on our agenda for today. Let’s now turn to the proposal for the Miraloma jail facility, the presentations. We’re going to hear from a number of speakers. First, we’re going to hear from the Public Works and the Sheriff’s Department, and after that, we’ll have a presentation from Patrice Colors of Reform L.A. Jails, and then we will have our discussion. So can we invite Alicia Ramos, Dr. Dawn Terashita, and Ken McQuade? We don’t have microphones.
I think so.
Are they working now?
Yeah.
Great.
Madam Chair, I’m just wondering whether, I don’t know how long this segment is going to take, but whether we should take a short break, our morning break here or not.
I’d like to, some of the speakers are on a time element. I’d like to, right after this, we’ll take a break.
Before public comment.
Before public comment, okay. We’ll check out the time. Welcome.
Hopefully, it’s working? Yes, okay. Well, good morning, members of the Commission and all those in attendance today. Thank you very much for your interest in the Miraloma Women’s Detention Center project. My name is Alicia Ramos. I am with the Los Angeles County Department of Public Works. We are the project delivery arm, if you will, of the project. I am joined today with other members of our project team. Dr. Dawn Terashita is here with us today, as well as Commander Ken McQuade with the L.A. County Department, Sheriff’s Department. If I didn’t mention, Dr. Terashita is with the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. So we, again, thank you for the invitation. We are here to specifically address the concerns that your Commission has indicated us, that your public has commented on, those concerns being specifically valley fever, the distance of the location of the project from the urban downtown L.A. area, as well as the overall cost of the project. So we’ll be addressing those, and we will interchangeably speak to the content that is specific to each of our expertise. So without further delay, we’ll go ahead and get started. So to give some basic project background, the Miraloma Detention Center is located in Lancaster and has served as a county facility to house men, women, and juvenile inmates since the late 1950s. It was most recently utilized by Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, until November of 2012, when ICE terminated their contract with the county and the Miraloma facility became available to the county for reuse, repurposing. The project itself was established by the Board of Supervisors in October of 2013, and it is partially funded by a $100 million grant through the State Public Safety and Offender Rehabilitation Services Act of 2007, otherwise more commonly known as AB 900. The basic features of the project include: The project will occur on an approximately 36-acre site in a campus-type setting. The project aims to create a less institutional experience by providing both indoor and outdoor Campus setting is anticipated to lend itself to more space and natural environments for certain programming objectives. The project, as we said earlier, also features fiscal responsibility by using $100 million in state AB 900 grant funding and planning for substantial renovation and reuse of an existing county asset, reuse of the existing facility there with renovation and new construction. The project itself will provide a new onsite medical clinic. This will be a newly constructed medical clinic. And then, within the project, once it’s completed, will provide gender-responsive, trauma-informed, evidence-based programming. We wanted to touch on the environmental impact report process and give some background to that, simply because some of the topics that we’ve, that you’ve indicated have come up from the public are topics that are covered in the EIR. So just to give some background, the environmental impact report was prepared in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as CEQA. They included all required analysis of the potential environmental effects of the project, as well as extended public review opportunities. Within the context of the EIR process, we received 295 letters or inquiries, all with some form of question, if not multiple comments. They were received or responded to in the final EIR. Concerns that were expressed through those inquiries included general opposition to incarceration, distance from downtown for visiting families, and potential-
Here, we do have one public comment card.
Okay, on the minutes, okay. Before we vote.
Eric Preben.
Thank you, Commissioner. Which, where do you want me to, right here? Fine, thank you. So yes, the July 2018 minutes reflect Commissioner Bonner’s submission, and I appreciate that. And I also want to reflect on our discussion that people from the public be afforded the opportunity to be identified as those who spoke in the minutes. And again, we didn’t do it here, and I’m not sure if that’s because the speakers in July didn’t know to request to be added to those minutes. The reason why I bring it up, obviously, is because I came, I think, in March, April, and May, or something like that, to bring to the attention of this body the Miraloma facility was percolating along and that there were going to be some construction decisions and such, as we faced what I will describe as a rising tide of valley fever and coxie in that area. And so those comments were made professionally, I thought, through Mr. Williams and through the Women’s and Girls Initiative, and to as many of the County Board of Supervisors personnel, who I thought would be appropriate, in the Sheriff’s Department, to make that clear that we should be very cautious as we move forward with any plan to bring women from Los Angeles, once incarcerated, into an environment where there is a greater incidence and a higher vulnerability for women of color, women of Filipino-American background, and pregnant women. So obviously, in an incarcerated environment, sometimes you have a chance to check to see if you’re pregnant, sometimes you don’t. So this is a bad, unfortunate turn of events that is completely inconvenient for a plan to incarcerate women there. So I would just ask that the Public Health Department step forward and acknowledge, today even in LA Times Essential, there’s an article by Cal Matters on September 25th about the escalating valley fever. But the valley fever, and I will leave in one second, is not the only concern. Obviously, the biggest concern is the burden on families and ordinary women and their families to get to this facility if it ever moves forward. So that’s why we ask that the state and the governor, who’ve been contacted about this, including the state Public Health Department, so that they can redeploy the $100 million in AB 900 money to a facility. There are many suggestions made by groups who have spoken to you, and I will just simply say I appreciate the leadership on this at a time when women, more than ever, need to be protected, especially in this context where we do not want them sent far away, deported, if you will, to a far, far away. So with that in mind, I would like to submit this to the minutes. It is a letter that was sent to some county folks, and if you could simply add that to the record, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and that topic is on our agenda for today. Let’s now turn to the proposal for the Miraloma jail facility, the presentations. We’re going to hear from a number of speakers. First, we’re going to hear from the Public Works and the Sheriff’s Department, and after that, we’ll have a presentation from Patrice Colors of Reform L.A. Jails, and then we will have our discussion. So can we invite Alicia Ramos, Dr. Dawn Terashita, and Ken McQuade? We don’t have microphones.
I think so.
Are they working now?
Yeah.
Great.
Madam Chair, I’m just wondering whether, I don’t know how long this segment is going to take, but whether we should take a short break, our morning break here or not.
I’d like to, some of the speakers are on a time element. I’d like to, right after this, we’ll take a break.
Before public comment.
Before public comment, okay. We’ll check out the time. Welcome.
Hopefully, it’s working? Yes, okay. Well, good morning, members of the Commission and all those in attendance today. Thank you very much for your interest in the Miraloma Women’s Detention Center project. My name is Alicia Ramos. I am with the Los Angeles County Department of Public Works. We are the project delivery arm, if you will, of the project. I am joined today with other members of our project team. Dr. Dawn Terashita is here with us today, as well as Commander Ken McQuade with the L.A. County Department, Sheriff’s Department. If I didn’t mention, Dr. Terashita is with the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health. So we, again, thank you for the invitation. We are here to specifically address the concerns that your Commission has indicated us, that your public has commented on, those concerns being specifically valley fever, the distance of the location of the project from the urban downtown L.A. area, as well as the overall cost of the project. So we’ll be addressing those, and we will interchangeably speak to the content that is specific to each of our expertise. So without further delay, we’ll go ahead and get started. So to give some basic project background, the Miraloma Detention Center is located in Lancaster and has served as a county facility to house men, women, and juvenile inmates since the late 1950s. It was most recently utilized by Immigration and Customs Enforcement, ICE, until November of 2012, when ICE terminated their contract with the county and the Miraloma facility became available to the county for reuse, repurposing. The project itself was established by the Board of Supervisors in October of 2013, and it is partially funded by a $100 million grant through the State Public Safety and Offender Rehabilitation Services Act of 2007, otherwise more commonly known as AB 900. The basic features of the project include: The project will occur on an approximately 36-acre site in a campus-type setting. The project aims to create a less institutional experience by providing both indoor and outdoor Campus setting is anticipated to lend itself to more space and natural environments for certain programming objectives. The project, as we said earlier, also features fiscal responsibility by using $100 million in state AB 900 grant funding and planning for substantial renovation and reuse of an existing county asset, reuse of the existing facility there with renovation and new construction. The project itself will provide a new onsite medical clinic. This will be a newly constructed medical clinic. And then, within the project, once it’s completed, will provide gender-responsive, trauma-informed, evidence-based programming. We wanted to touch on the environmental impact report process and give some background to that, simply because some of the topics that we’ve, that you’ve indicated have come up from the public are topics that are covered in the EIR. So just to give some background, the environmental impact report was prepared in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as CEQA. They included all required analysis of the potential environmental effects of the project, as well as extended public review opportunities. Within the context of the EIR process, we received 295 letters or inquiries, all with some form of question, if not multiple comments. They were received or responded to in the final EIR. Concerns that were expressed through those inquiries included general opposition to incarceration, distance from downtown for visiting families, and potential exposure to valley fever spores in the Antelope Valley soil. The EIR concluded that with the project design features and with mitigation measures, any potential environmental impacts would be less than significant. And our board adopted that EIR in October of 2016. Now we get to the specific community concerns that you’ve relayed to us. We’re going to start with valley fever, and I’m going to turn that over to Dr. Terashita.
Good morning, thanks. Can you hear me? Okay, good. So what is valley fever? Valley fever is a typically treatable, non-contagious illness that usually affects lungs and is caused by a fungus that’s found in the soil in many parts of California and elsewhere. In recent years, the incidence of reported valley fever cases is approximately 50 cases per 100,000 in the Antelope Valley region. In about 60% of cases, symptoms are very mild or not present at all, and when symptoms are present, they can resemble the flu. In very rare instances, the illness can spread outside the lungs, causing a severe condition called disseminated valley fever. People most at risk are those working among dust and soil-disturbing activities such as excavation, archaeology, firefighters, mining, and agricultural fields. With the planned design features, construction, and operation measures, the risk of valley fever is expected to be no greater than other Lancaster locations.
And so to speak to valley fever, still on the topic of valley fever, but to speak to the items that would more directly be addressed by the project itself, as Dr. Terashita mentioned, dust. Dust, these spores are contained in the dust, and so when dust gets kicked up, that’s when that exposure could be increased. So with construction, we get dirty. So there are two components here that we’d like to address, the first being the measures that we take during construction for dust control. Dust control is a typical thing that we always have in any project, regardless of the location. But specific things that we do, site dust reduction measures include wetting of soil, covering stockpiled soils, soil removal from vehicles. We put grates at the entrance and exit of our sites, try and remove as much particulate matter as we can before any of these vehicles get out into the open roads. And we use respirators for the laborers that are in close contact with soil. So this would be for excavators, archaeology. They’re required by Cal OSHA to have a certain level of a respirator in order to conduct the work activities that they’ll be performing. Post-construction measures on the site, this would be after we’re done constructing the facility and it goes into operation. This touches on some of the design features that we mentioned that, in the EIR, would help mitigate the dust issue. So post-construction measures onsite. Exterior surfaces onsite are a combination of concrete, asphalt, turf, and imported cover for sports fields. On-site gardening, which will be one of the programs that we have, will be conducted in raised beds with imported soil from outside of Antelope Valley or the Kern Valley. And there will be continued communication, continued sheriff-public health communication to address public health-related medical concerns expressed by the inmates, regardless of what it could be caused by. Any of those illnesses or conditions reported by the inmates would be reported to the onsite medical clinic, so we’d have immediate ability to address any kind of illness there, but we would have the particular information to look out for valley fever conditions. And now the topic of the distance of the location of Miraloma from the downtown urban Los Angeles area. I’m going to turn that over to Commander Ken McQuade to speak to that.
Good morning. The county and the department understands that there is a lot of potential challenges by this location with transportation for them, for the families that are going to be incarcerated up in Miraloma as compared to the regional detention facility. But we’re going to try to, or incorporate within the build, better visitation locations with facility for contact visits, non-contact visits, video visiting, and there will most likely, by the time this is constructed, to work on sort of like a Skype or some kind of technology, but it’s still in the works, it’s just something in progress in order to mitigate some of the travel distances. Also, part of this transportation is going to fall under the Gender Responsive Advisory Committee. This was established by the Board of Supervisors, and its focus was to identify the problematic issues that are going to be related to this new location, come up with strategies and mitigation challenges to reduce the distance in the sense of using public transportation, working with community-based organizations to come up with some kind of solutions, and work together as a team with the community in order to provide transportation for those who are not able to drive those distances.
Okay, and to look at the preliminary project schedule that we have for the Miraloma site, we anticipate coming back to the Board of Supervisors with a recommendation to award what we call a design-build contract. We expect that to be the first quarter of 2019, probably late January. Also, in this process, not only do we have to go back to our board for that award, since we have the state funding grant, we also have to incorporate the state’s process. So we have to go back to the state at the same time for their approval to award as well. So we see that happening concurrently, probably just a little bit behind our board action, but first quarter of 2019 is what’s anticipated. With that taking place on that schedule, we would anticipate the start of construction to be the first quarter of 2020. We would spend the year of 2019 in the design phase. So starting construction first quarter 2020 would hopefully result in a construction completion of the second quarter 2022. Current progress, this is just to let you know where we’re at right now. Currently, we’re involved in the design-build solicitation process. It began in June of this year, and it’s ongoing. So we are looking at proposals that have been brought forth by two proposers. Those are under an evaluation process, so there’s some unknown to that right now. Until that process concludes, we don’t have that recommended proposer yet, but we expect it to conclude probably in the next six to eight weeks. Once we have that information, then we will take that forward to the board. Applying completion of the solicitation process, final project cost information will be obtained, followed by the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors to award a design-build contract. So that brings me to the topic of cost, which is the other topic that you folks heard a lot from the public on. I’m not trying to be elusive about this, but right now, as I said, we’re probably about six to eight weeks away from having this information. Part of the proposals that come in from these firms is their ideas, their concepts on how to refine the design for the project, but also includes their cost. So I don’t have those numbers yet. We will have them shortly, so I don’t want to put any numbers out that could be misleading when we’re around the corner from getting something more precise. So I’ll leave it at that.
That concludes your presentation?
That would be it, yes, thank you.
Thanks very much. What I’d like to do is to invite the next presenter, and then we’ll ask of both groups questions together, if that’s okay with everybody. Can you hang around for a little bit?
Absolutely.
Okay. You know, I think it’d be fun, so I want to introduce and bring up Patrice Colors. Maybe we just switch, but don’t go far. Greetings. Welcome.
I’m having James-
Please introduce yourself.
Yes, I’m having James come up with me for moral support. They had a whole team, so.
Okay.
Hi, I’m Patrice Colors, founder of Dignity and Power Now, also the chairperson for Reform L.A. Jails. I just want to note that we have Youth Justice Coalition in the meeting space today as a community member, Dignity and Power Now in the meeting space today, White People for Black Lives, Black Lives Matter, and Dignity and Power Now. It’s always important to talk about who’s here. I think this presentation that I’m going to give is, there’ll be facts and statistics, but there’s also a conversation, is it?
Yeah, I think real folks.
Is this better?
Yeah.
This presentation is facts and statistics, but it’s also a larger philosophical question about the building of a women’s jail here in this county. It’s no, you can click the next slide. There’s no secret that many organizations have been protesting this jail plan for almost a decade, and we believe the Miraloma facility in particular should not be built, and there’s several reasons why we think that. So this conversation about valley fever, while the last presenter said it’s treatable, it’s not curable. Valley fever is an incurable lung disease caused by airborne fungal spores. A jail is slated to be built on the area of L.A. County most prone to valley fever. We think it’s an unnecessary risk for families and communities. We think it will have longstanding impacts. We know that every year that the jail is in operation, 5,000 people will be exposed to an incurable illness. Could go to the next slide. The most recent soil tests were in 2014. They found levels of TPH above the residential limit. The CDC holds that TPHs have lasting effects on the central nervous system, the lungs, and other major organs. If we could think back in history, how many moments were there construction sites where, you know, the company or the corporation said that, oh, this won’t, we don’t need to protest it, or there are several reasons why it’s unnecessary for, you know, the people who are challenging this to be speaking out. And we know, you know, decades later, that folks find out that they have cancer, that there’s, that their children are born with diseases that were incurable, and we don’t want to end up in the same exact situation here in this county. Go to the next slide. So we want to talk a lot, we talk a lot about social harm or the public health impact. Jails, and we know this because we’ve been dealing with this for decades here in this county, are often violent, deeply traumatic, and deadly. In 2017 alone, there were 25 deaths and nearly 2,000 documented uses of force by LSD inside of L.A. County jails. And there has been an ongoing issue with real accountability. Women of color, the majority of the population of incarcerated women in L.A. County, are subject to rampant systemic medical neglect and abuse inside L.A. County jails. We, you know, as we’re having this meeting right now, there’s Kavanaugh hearings happening, and we’ve heard from women who’ve been housed in Linwood Facility, who’ve been sexually assaulted by the Sheriff’s Department. I think we have to have a really honest conversation about that in this county as the Sheriff’s Department is gearing up towards building a new, quote, “campus” facility for women. We don’t want people assigned as women or anyone else in our communities to be subject to these violent and traumatic conditions. Constructing a new jail is constructing a new space for more violence to be enacted on our loved ones and our community members. So this is a bit about who’s actually being locked up in our jails. 63% of the incarcerated population is there for nonviolent offenses. Obviously, we’re in a moment, not just in the state, but around the country, talking about bail reform, who ends up in jail and ends up lingering in there when they don’t need to. 43% of the incarcerated people are being held pre-trial without a conviction. 28% of the incarcerated population have mental health needs, which are often triggered or exacerbated by jail. Many of the people incarcerated in L.A. are unhoused. Homeless people are arrested 17 times the rate of the total population, and 8,000, 10,000 people released every month end up homeless on the streets, many of them women. So this is the philosophical part for us, which is what kind of future are we investing in? most of the construction, but it won't cover ongoing operational costs of the county. It will not cover the cost of families and communities that come in with losing a loved one, a caregiver, a home, or a source of income. Budgets, money are our imagined futures. Building a jail is investing in a future for our children where they are incarcerated. We believe Justice LA, YJC, DPN, Black Lives Matter, White People for Black Lives, that we should actually be reinvesting those dollars into schools, jobs, youth centers, supports for families. It was actually exciting to hear that there's going to be a gardening program and there's going to be a medical clinic. Why does that have to happen in captivity? That actually can happen inside of our county. People are locked up for nonviolent offenses, held before trial, locked up for being mentally ill, locked up for being homeless, and we all know those locked up are disproportionately black, brown, low-income, young women. Building more jails is not a valid, necessary, or acceptable solution to social problems like poverty, mental illness, substance abuse, domestic violence. Our city spends 42% and our county 56% of our budget on policing and incarceration. We need to rethink this. Instead of spending more on a new jail, we need to, we need to stop spending money on jails and invest in housing, mental health, treatment, youth centers, schools, and other support services. And lastly, the Miraloma plan is fundamentally unnecessary and unjustifiably harmful. We must use our resources to create a future where we don't lock people away, but take care of them where they are. Failure to recognize the harmful impacts of jail expansion and to move forward with this dangerous plan constitutes state sanctioned violence. Here are some resources. We Are Not Disposable, the Toxic Impacts of Prisons and Jails, Curb, which is a statewide coalition, put this together in partnership with many local organizations. Dignity and Power Now, in our third year of being organization, did a report on breaking the silence, civil and human rights violations resulting from medical negligence and abuse of women of color inside LA County jails. And then we, Justice LA, developed a reclaim, reimagine, and reinvest budget. So looking at the ways that we can reinvest the policing and incarceration dollars into real community-based solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can we do questions? Or should we take a break? Can we start questions or do you?
Yes.
Can we start the questions? Or, you want to take, okay, let's make five minutes, please, like restroom break and come right back as we are a little bit on a time crunch. Thank you so much. Thank you. Oh, that's to ring my bell. I found that. Okay, thank you. We're reconvening. Can we get, can everyone come up, maybe, can we get extra chairs?
Yes.
They're here, excellent, so everyone can sit here for, well, first we'll open up the, yeah, not public comment, this will be first the commissioners discussing, any questions for the present presenters. Thank you for your, thank you for coming today and opening up this, which is getting to be a hotter and hotter topic. I have one question before, if you might, if I might do chair privilege for a second. I heard, clarify this for me, I heard that once CRDF, the women in CRDF move out to Miraloma, that that facility, which has kind of been deemed inadequate, that men from Central Jail are going to be housed there? Is that true? Does anybody know about that?
Yes, that's exactly what's going to occur. There will be a refurbishing timeframe. I don't know what that's actually going to be, but they're going to, originally it was a male facility and then it was converted for the female, so there was some materials and some restroom constraints and things that were redone. So the proposal is, is once Miraloma is completed and the women are at the new facility, that they're going to refurbish some of these and then put the males, probably from Men's Central Jail, like half of one of their, because, and Men's Central Jail's two sides, so one side will be going to CRDF.
Okay, so it's inadequate for women to be there, but now it's going to be adequate for men to be there?
I don't really have a specific answer with that. I think because basis, with AB 109, we have a lot of sentencing and things that are going to be long-term. Right now, CRDF is the only women's choice, women's facility. We're trying to create a better environment by using like a campus kind of feel like there are in other facilities throughout the state. And what we envision, that is for the gender responsiveness aspect of that new facility will just have a better assimilation for them as they come back into the community. Where with CRDF, those are probably going to be more for the lower, the medium housing that's just for short-term. I can't necessarily say it's going to be long-term sentencing. Generally, those bodies are then transported up to Wayside, and there's a lot more vocational programs, educational programs up in that facility because they have a lot more adequate spacing. So we see it more, I don't like use the term, but I see it more like swing space for the housing as we're doing the reconstruction for Men's Central Jail.
Okay, thank you for that. Commissioners, who would like to, Commissioner Ocean?
So I have a lot of, I have a lot of questions, but I'll try to limit them to three out of respect to my other commissioners and to the, to the folks that are, that are joining us. So there are a number, as Ms. Cullors mentioned, there are a number of reform initiatives that the people of the state of California and our elected representatives have enacted, Proposition 54, Proposition 57, more recently SB 10, even though, you know, we're unclear precisely how that's going to be rolled out. And the anticipation is that these initiatives will bring down our populations in the jails and also in our prisons. And I'm wondering about your projections, particularly from the Sheriff's Department, about our populations and whether, and why those population projections would necessitate the construction of a new jail rather than scaling down because perhaps we'll have a reduction in our pre-trial populations and in the number of people serving sentences for felonies that have now been converted to, say, misdemeanors. So that's one question, and then I have questions about gender responsiveness and visitation, but I'll pause there if you can respond to, to projections about jail populations.
I'm really not in position to focus on what our projections are going to be because we really don't know. It's very crystal ball to some perspectives because we don't know how some of these initiatives are going to work out. One thing I can speak to is by the total bed count, even though we're opening up an additional facility, we're actually going to be reducing by almost 500 beds. Currently, right now, Men's Central Jail houses approximately, let's say 4,100 is a general number, and CRDF, the women's facility, let's say it's about 2,100, but at the new Miraloma, it's only going to be about 1,604. So when you do the, the math on that, you're almost going to end up with about 500 beds less.
So is it that Men's Central will be torn, is it going to be torn down? Because I didn't hear that in the presentation.
Well, that's because this is a Miraloma presentation, and that's more for the CCTF or the Consolidated Treatment, erectional Treatment Facility. And that, there's going to be phases on that where they're going to be demolishing one half while they're building it, and then there'll be another phase where the whole facility will be torn down.
Okay, so I think there's still some questions about the number of, of beds, it sounds like, because of.
Well, CCTF is going to have 3,800 beds or 3,885 beds.
So that's roughly the same as Men's Central.
But Men's Central's 4,100.
Right, so about 300. So it'll be down about 500.
Right, so you're going to be about, that's what I said, about somewhere around 500 total beds less.
Okay, but that may not be as, but we may have a more, more of a reduction in terms of the jail populations. It may be much less than 500, right? So that's my question, is about jail populations and whether we will need the amount of beds that are being proposed even with the 500 reduction that you're talking about. So my next question is about gender responsiveness. And so I'm wondering if, because one of the selling points about the new facility is that it will be gender, gender-responsive, trauma-informed, with medical, medical clinics, which I imagine would include psychological services, particularly because women have, have high rates of sexual assault, physical abuse prior to coming into the, into the system, and then once in the system, those are exacerbated. And I'm just wondering if you could talk a bit more about the kinds of services that you anticipate being provided in jails, particularly given a lot of the academic literature has said that gender responsiveness is often incompatible with the custodial environment because of all of the traumatic experiences that are triggered by the custodial environment. So I'm wondering if you could talk a bit about the gender-responsive approach that you imagine will be provided, undertaken by the staff at the new facility?
We have a inmate services bureau. They'll be coordinating with all the programming with the CBOs in the area and those that are selected to provide this additional trauma-type relationship and training. We will have DMH or CHS custody health services also involved at the facility for specific interventions. We'll have a J-Met team that you heard earlier will be assigned to this facility. And we envision that by having this campus-type environment, we're going to have a more conducive learning environment, which we don't have now at CRDF, because we envision a lot of the population is going to be moving about. We're going to have classrooms in one location of this campus. We're also going to have classrooms within their housing areas. We're going to focus on more vocational kind of training that we don't have now. And then we're going to have transitional housing, which is going to be like almost a step from regular housing into this more of a urban kind of setting. And we're going to expose as much of this kind of training, programming, and treatment as we can that we just don't provide right now at CRDF. So it's, it's still within the design concepts. We haven't finalized what that's going to be, but it is part of the gender-responsive advisories committee is going to be targeting those exact issues and questions and how we're going to put those into play.
And so just, I guess, two follow-up questions. Who is on that advisory committee?
There, I couldn't give you the exact number.
Well, I mean, maybe you could give us categories.
Yeah, right, right now, the, the chairperson of it is the captain of the regional facility or the CRDF, and there's a, members from the justice deputies from the board. We have some CBOs that are also involved with that. We have Department of Children's Services. We have probation. There's, I think mental health is also present. Harriet Buhi, I think I might be pronouncing that wrong, she has a representation there. So we have quite a bit. I think there's averages about 14 people, meets once a month.
And my last question about the gender responsiveness is, has the Sheriff's Department experimented with engaging in gender-responsive programming for women under its custody, perhaps in a, in a more of a supervisory model in the community as opposed to in a locked setting? Which, again, the locked setting is quite triggering for people who have experienced sexual assault.
I'm not in a position to speak about any kind of that training beyond custody. I work custody division, so I'm unaware of what kind of programs are out there for the patrol environment. I can say that we have various training programs right now that we have for our newly-assigned custody staff members in regards to the needs, especially for CRDF, where they, they go through a PowerPoint presentation. We have open discussion on various topics and are trying to relay that kind of sensitivity training and be awareness to the people that they are going to be monitoring within the facility.
And my last point is more of a comment about visitation. I'm very concerned about what was described in terms of visitation, particularly remote visitation, non-contact visitation, especially for women. Visitation, especially with children, is critically important for women's recovery and their ability to re-enter the community, and it's very important for children's health. And to the extent that this, this facility will be located so far away, I think will have catastrophic effects for families, children, for our communities. And I think it's especially ironic, given that the, the board, under the leadership of supervisor Hilda Solis, has been focusing so much on how do we support incarcerated women? And part of, one of the most critical ways we can support them is having contact with their children, and so I'm very concerned that this will operate at cross purposes. And frankly, I'm, just to be clear, I'm opposed to this, to this facility. I don't think it should go forward.
Can I pass it? Okay.
There are a few things that you had mentioned that I wanted to speak to a little bit about because I understand the perception of incarceration has a very kind of defined picture. The aspiration of this project, we say campus setting, we're trying to change that. And when we say campus setting, we use terms like normalize, which quite honestly just means we're trying to make it more normal, more of a day-to-day experience. And I'm not by any means saying that it solves every problem, specifically distance. I understand that there's still challenges there that we're, we're looking at. But the vision of Miraloma is to have it more like an open setting so that there's more of that ability to leave one setting, go to another. These are dormitory buildings, if you will, for housing, sleeping. And then there are buildings that contain vocational classrooms, that they would be leaving one setting to go across a campus, to a program that they're taking, to a dining hall, to a kitchen, to a culinary arts facility, so that there's movement rather than just to, to kind of take the vision of a locked-up setting that doesn't change 24 hours a day. And in fact, the buildings themselves are not locked. We do have a secure perimeter, so I'm not going to take that away, but the buildings themselves are not locked. They can kind of come and go throughout the day. There will be operational issues that set timelines, but I want to paint a picture that is difficult to envision because of a lot of the things we've already seen and we know to exist now. Already set something in our head that we've predetermined what this setting might be like, and I just want to put out some information to say that the ambition is to change that. And this, I think, is a step that heads in that direction.
Just, just on that point, has the county considered having facilities where people can check in, like go during the day and then go home and do the kind of programming that you've described?
I can't speak to that. That would be something that the sheriff would have to speak to, and Ken, I don't know if that's something that you have insight on.
I think, I don't have the specific numbers. I do know we have some. I do know there are some programs with probation where they have the check-in, checkout aspect of it. This, this facility is more for what we currently write, have right now for CRDF that are being mandated by the courts to, to serve their time, and we're trying to just enhance that environment by utilizing this campus feel. So the check-in, checkout, I don't, I can't really speak specifically what we have within the Sheriff's Department, but I think probation is running something similar to that. And, and on your visitation question with, we don't currently have contact visits right now at CRDF. This facility is going to encourage that, that we're going to have a, a facility that is going to be very family-friendly in the visiting area where contact visits will be encouraged. So I think from that perspective, it, it might be an enhancement more so than where CRDF is right now.
Add a little bit more on that visitation. Thank you for picking up on that, Ken. Is that we are dedicating program, there are whole buildings in the anticipated concept for Miraloma that are dedicated to visitation. There are three forms of visitation that we're currently anticipating, which would include contact visiting, specifically with outdoor areas for children. We have non-contact visiting, which is more traditional, what you've seen with the glass partition. Then there's also video.
mandated by the courts to, to serve their time. And we're trying to just enhance that environment by utilizing this campus feel. So the check-in, check-out, I, I don't, I can't really speak specifically what we have within the sheriff's department, but I think probation is running something similar to that. And, and on your visitation question with, we don't currently have contact visits right now at CRDF. This facility is going to encourage that, that we're going to have a, a facility that is going to be very family-friendly in the visiting area where contact visits will be encouraged. So I think from that perspective, it, it might be an enhancement more so than where CRDF is right now.
Add a little bit more on that visitation. Thank you for picking up on that, Ken. Is that we are dedicating program, there are whole buildings in the anticipated concept for Mar-a-Loma that are dedicated to visitation. There are three forms of visitation that we're currently anticipating, which would include contact visiting, specifically with outdoor areas for children. We have non-contact visiting, which is more traditional, what you've seen with the glass partition. Then there's also video visiting, so that in extreme circumstances, if that's the only method that somebody has, there's that option for them. So part of Mar-a-Loma is to emphasize, and I would say, speaking to the gender responsiveness, is to recognize that need for visitation and to actually respond to it, so.
Pass it.
Yes, I, I'll limit mine to two. And the first one will be for Dr. Tereshita. If you can share as Ms. Colas, the tension of thought for me is the competing schools of thoughts as it relates to valley fever. One school of thought is that it's incurable, and another one is that it's treatable. How, what data can be presented to guarantee that valley fever is in fact--
Curable.
--curable? What would you say to that?
So, so we, we do, I, I oversee valley fever surveillance for LA County, and I've been doing it here for 15 years, but we've been doing it in the county for probably a few decades, maybe closer, closer to 30, 40 years. So we do have data on the types of patients we see. So we know in the literature, in publications, in the patients that we do surveillance on here in the county, that most patients have very mild symptoms. Actually, a lot of people have no symptoms. In fact, maybe many of you who don't think you've had valley fever have traveled through the central valley at some point and have actually picked it up and had very mild, maybe a cough, maybe low-grade fevers, maybe nothing at all, and you've gotten valley fever. And then you're, you're fine. You go about your daily business and you're fine. Now, are you cured? It's difficult to say unless you do some complex testing of your human body to see if it's completely gone. But for all intents and purposes, you have no symptoms. You will never have symptoms again. You, you don't have it. So that's what we see in about 60% of people who get valley fever. Now, in the other 40% of people who get valley fever, we do have symptoms. And it can cause fever, maybe higher fevers, maybe more severe respiratory illness like pneumonia, that's probably one of the more common symptoms that we see, lung, lung symptoms. And we do have what we call anti-fungals. It's like an antibiotic that you take for like a strep throat or something. Anti-fungals treat fungus, because this is a fungus. So there are many anti-fungals out there that doctors can prescribe to treat, that's what we call treat, valley fever. And this will, in most cases, alleviate symptoms. So the pneumonia will go away. But I mentioned that a very small percentage of people will get what we call a disseminated or a body, an entire body type of picture. And these are usually people who are more immunocompromised. They might have underlying cancer or HIV or a different number of conditions. And in these people, it is really difficult to treat. And that is very well documented in the literature. We probably get a handful of cases a year here in the county. These very difficult to treat. And for some reason, the anti-fungals don't alleviate the symptoms in this person. And they do become what is referred to as incurable, and they usually wind up on some, some sort of long-term therapy, which involves maybe anti-fungals given intravenously or, or just on a long-term basis. Again, this is very, very, very few people. And I think that's what you're referring to when you say incurable. And that, and that does happen, but it's extremely rare.
Ms. Colas, would you want to add anything to that?
Well, I'm wondering, how does that impact someone who's in a locked facility? So the, the data that you're talking about, is that for people who are out in the world? Or is that, what's the difference between someone being in a locked facility whose immune system is more compromised versus someone who is out in the free world?
That's a good question. And I think that's what we're talking about, right? It, it would seem, based on many studies that have been done in prisons, especially the California prisons with valley fever, that the locked population is similar to the unlocked population or the rest of the community in, in the risk factors that would cause like a disseminated picture. It's really the same, if you have HIV in a locked setting versus outside, you have pretty much the same risk. What I'm getting at is the locked setting, I don't think really has much to do with it, other than actually in a locked setting or in a setting that has ready access to medical care, it might actually be easier for you to get early treatment, which can, can in fact prevent these long-term disseminated type pictures.
I guess the last thing I'll say on this point, which is, there's an assumption that there's ready treatment for people, when there's been a well-documented history of medical neglect at the state level and also at the local level. So I just, we're speaking as if this is not a dire situation, given what our county has, given what's impacted prisoners inside LA County. I think we need to have a different kind of conversation.
Hi, good morning. My name is Yvette Olah. I'm with Californians United for Responsible Budget. We released the report that was presented earlier on the toxicity of the Mar-a-Loma jail. One thing to consider outside of the locked versus unlocked differences is that the population of folks that are feeding into our jails are folks that have already been exposed to medical neglect due to lack of access to medical insurance and care. These are folks that have an eight-time higher likelihood of contracting valley fever versus the average population because of their lower income. I believe it's around $15,000 is what the average person makes before they are incarcerated. And so these are, this is a population of folks that is already vulnerable to lack of access to medical care and treatment. And like was mentioned, lack of access once they are incarcerated due to medical neglect inside.
Finally, Commander Tim McCray, I want to share the sentiments of our vice chair, Ocean. If you can be a little bit more specific in terms as it relates to visitational opportunities and the transportation contracts of the specifics, if you will, to transporting families of inmates that are visiting, families that are visiting inmates from a considerable amount of distance. Can you say a word to that? And what accommodations, if any, is being made for those family members who travel from a great distance to come and, from, from far, faraway distance to come and visit an inmate?
Well, currently, right now, we don't have any CBOs or any kind of program that's set in for place for busing as of today from either downtown Los Angeles or specific identified points to Mar-a-Loma. That's going to be part of the mission of the Gender Responsive Advisory Commission. Like on the panel that, or on the one of the slides showed was that construction's not even slotted to start until the first quarter of 2019, and that it's projected to be open with no delays by second quarter of 2022. So we can safely say that something's going to be about four years away. So we'll have that opportunity to identify either CBOs or some, in the past, when they've had females visiting or females housed there, we had one of the CBOs, I don't know if they were going to be a part of this or not, but it was friends from the outside. They provided transportation. There were some Catholic charities within the Antelope Valley area or downtown that were providing transportation. But we are going to have more of a robust kind of discussion with this advisory committee and then select through inmate services bureau, various CBOs, or even contractual obligations from private companies to, to transport families up there. Now, right now, the, like, for example, we have a contract with a company that does the transportation at Pitch's facility from the main gate to the other facilities. That's someone we could contact to see if that's something that's going to be feasible through that contract that we've already have. So there are a bunch of questions, but we don't have any specific answers because it's still a few years away. As for those that are traveling from farther away, there are people that are from out-of-state that are currently housed within our facility, that their family members may be in other states, just as we do in the state system. There's no set accommodation process right now, like an overnight kind of stay. But that is something that the advisory committee can look into to see whether or not this is going to be feasible for those families and, and if there are any kind of CBOs within the Antelope Valley area that are willing to accommodate those kind of things.
Thank you. Sorry for mispronouncing your name.
I didn't hear you at all.
I said, sorry. I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
Yeah, that's okay.
Commissioner Harris?
Yeah, a couple of questions. I know we're talking about this is a design build and it's going to be a campus-like setting. And I know I have attended some institutions that were on what were called campuses, and they were all self-enclosed. You went from one building site to another building site, to another building site in totally enclosed environment, and that was more because of the weather situation. But I'm wondering, is this even being considered as a way of mitigating some of this potential exposure to valley fever? I'm very familiar with the site. I spent 11 years of my life living in the Antelope Valley. I would be considered, I guess, one of those compromised people. I was, my family moved me there because I had asthma, not knowing what we know now. So I grew up in the Antelope Valley with asthma. I'm very familiar with valley fever, and I understand, in fact, my school bus drove right past that facility every morning going to Del, Del Sur School. So I, I fully understand where it is, and I'm just wondering if there is any thought being given to that type of construction to mitigate that? That obviously would sort of preclude having any outdoors type of situation, which is not ideal. I understand that, but that would be a way of mitigating it. That's one question. Another question is, from a, a transportation point of view, I understand there's a great bit of concern. I know some people seem to think that the Antelope Valley is not in LA County, and I happen to know that that's not the case. And I also happen to know that it's not that far from here compared to other areas of LA County. We know even driving to CRDF can be an ordeal from other parts of LA County. So I'm wondering if we have any idea what percentage of the current inmate population, knowing that that's always changing, comes from the Antelope Valley, the Santa Clarita Valley, the North San Fernando Valley, and even the northern part of the St. Gabriel Valley? Because for them, this might not be such a bad thing. Now, it's, it's not going to be universally acceptable to everybody. We know that, no matter where we cite this thing, there's going to be transportation issues. But I'm just wondering, has there been any study on that? That might be a population, may say, well, for them, actually, it's, this is actually a good deal. And frankly, for the people that already live up there, it's like they're already exposed. So maybe if the situations were correct, this might give them some area of relief.
For that portion of your question, it's not the first part, but the second part in regards to the percentages. We have done some preliminary studies, nothing that we can, let's say, provide with specific details because it's something that we created at CRDF. What we did is we took a, a specific weekend during the summer, we identified the people that were obtaining visits. Currently, at that time, we're looking at about just under 21% of the females that are currently incarcerated for that weekend actually received a visit. So it was about 400 and, like, almost 441. And please don't quote me on these numbers, it's all coming out of my head. And from that, we actually pulled out all the information of those that are currently incarcerated. At the time, it was 2,091 women. And we broke down who would be considered North County and considered South County. One of the issues is that, is because there really is no line. There's, you, you can get many arguments on what is North County and what is South County. So what I did is I did this study myself, and I just used basically, I took a measurement from, I think, Long Beach up to Santa Clarita, I'm sorry, excuse me, up to Mar-a-Loma. Halfway point was Glendale. So I just used the 101 freeway as, as my dividing line. So based off of the current population for that 2,091, I had about 69% were in the South County and approximately 31% were in the North County. Now, that included the population of the, the valley and like Glendale, Burbank, Pasadena, and the cities along the, the 210 freeway, and then also obviously Antelope Valley and Santa Clarita. But one of the things we came with this study, it's very difficult, is that when a, when a person is arrested or booked, they don't always provide a zip code. They, but they do provide a city. But when we say Los Angeles, you can be in all four supervisory districts. So it's very difficult to disseminate or break out that kind of information. But we did do a study on that as well to find out where the key locations would be within the, if we were to do a transportation hub. So the majority of those that were incarcerated were coming out of First District. And then actually, the Third District was number two, followed by the Fifth and then the First. You would think the First would be much higher, but we felt the reason why is because people are putting down the term Los Angeles. So, you know, South LA and those areas, now they used Gardena, Inglewood, things like that. And then we can make that into the Second District. So that's how we were able to break out some of this information. So from that study, and this was just a preliminary first try, we can identify where we think some transportation hubs could be identified or selected in order to do the transportation for the weekends.
And is there any consideration of a more closed campus-type setting to mitigate the valley fever exposure?
Let me, that first part. You're correct, this is a project being delivered through design-build, which means what's out there right now is a concept. And that concept is a campus setting, so if you would, for lack of a better description, like a compound of buildings with space in between. So that concept is what we've put out there. The design-build proposers, though, can certainly take that another level. When we get into design, we can look at possibilities. Now, let me say, that has not been a strategy that we've necessarily-- And what I'm envisioning-- --description would be that these outdoor spaces would be covered so that you're really in an interior setting more holistically. So I would first speak to-- It was to keep it more of a outdoor-indoor, to, to benefit from those natural environments that we do have. And granted, valley fever being something that has come up on the radar. We have indicated quite-- asphalt covering the areas that now would have dust or just open areas. So those would be covered in a lot of the schemes we've looked at to minimize what exposure, you know, wind could kick up. So let me say, we have not looked at a strategy that encloses the entirety of it, I think predominantly because we do see an asset in having that outdoor exposure and making it open. There's a lot of benefits to daylight, other studies that have shown-- So--
Yeah, yeah, maybe everyone's better.
This one better? Okay. So, no, we haven't specifically looked at it, but I will leave open the door that we haven't finalized the design either. Okay?
You know, I'd like to, I'd like to comment. There's just something that's disturbing me a lot. It's like with all the attention on air quality and when we do, we're, we're, we're building a school, the soil, you know, all these studies. I mean, now that we know that valley fever is a thing, and when now we're going to bring people out there, and we're going to bring their children sometimes, if we can get the transportation. So we're going to bring children to visit their mothers out there when there is a health hazard. And I know we're trying to say it's rare, it's not that much, where some people get this and some people get that. It seems to me that we really are, that part of the concern around the health hazard is very serious. And then when you combine it to my mind, $100 million for a facility which does not have funding for the programming that you're talking about, correct? It's not, the programming is not funded yet. Did I hear that correctly?
We have not made-- Have not made a distinction of what's funded by state and what's not funded. If your question is, has programming been funded yet, that would be the sheriff--
Well, these, all these, the Gender Responsive Committee and the Trauma Informed Programming, the classes, all of these things, the, all these things that are supposed to be an advantage out there. Is there funding to make those happen? It's my question. I hear about the $100 million to build the facility.
Well, we currently have right now funding for these programs at CRDF. So that, that funding will then just carry over into that location as well. There are grants that we can apply for, there are other-- Uh, there are grants that we can apply for, there are other, uh, funding sources that we can tap into in order to provide that. Well, we currently do that now within the entire jail facility.
So, but, but still, I think what we're looking at is, um, we will build it and then we'll program it. That's what, that's the way I'm, that's, that's the impression I'm getting.
It, it will be, uh, in my, my opinion, um, yes and no. Um, it's going to go side by side. Um, we are going to make sure that when the female population is arriving, the, there will be programming immediately. We're not going to build it, put the women in, wait for funding for programming in the interim for six to eight months. All of that's going to be taking place. It's going to be transitional from CRDF to Mariloma. Um, will we have to identify other CBOs that are currently housed here in the LA Basin that may not want to trans, uh, drive out to, uh, the Antelope Valley? Yes. So that's where we're going to focus in on some of the CBOs that are already, uh, in, uh, the Antelope Valley. Uh, we have, our inmate services bureau has already reached out to, uh, some of those CBOs, uh, to see if they have any kind of interest, including the, I think, the Antelope Valley, uh, I don't know what it is, the junior or the college, uh, junior college, uh, facility out there, they've reached out to them. Also next to them is Lancaster, uh, prison, a California prison. They too have some of the CBOs that are already currently, uh, involved in programs. That's something else we're going to, uh, look into so we can have a smooth transition, uh, once the, uh, the women arrive.
Yeah, I think it's worth noting that all the hard work that's being done in Priya at CRDF now, the, uh, CBOs, the rape crisis, sexual assault centers that are engaged, um, which is a requirement of, uh, Priya, they are not located in the Antelope Valley. So that's definitely something that has to be, you know, also factored in if this...
And that's something that our inmate services bureau is currently working right now to see, uh, what can trans, a transition from what we currently have set up, uh, over to that. So it's not being forgotten. Um, it's just, once again, we're talking, um, several years out. So it's given us the opportunity to really identify some replacements if we have to, uh, for your concerns on, uh, Priya.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Um, well, uh, hmm. You know, we have, uh, I believe we have a role to play as a commission on this topic. Huh, sorry?
How about commentary?
I just wanted to say, I just, I guess, I just wanted to say this first, I said. We have a role to play, um, and I'm not sure what that is on, on this, uh, thank you for coming and, and bringing all this, um, directly to us. So I want us to, as we continue to, uh, to hear from commentary, um, but I also want us to think about, you know, what is our role and, um, as, in terms of our oversight responsibilities with something like this, with, it's obviously, it's a high-ticket item, um, with lots of questions and concerns. I just want, I, that's just my advisory to us to think about what that, what that's going to look like for us. And now I would like to turn it over to the, uh, public commentary.
Excuse me.
You can be excused, yes. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Eric Preven, followed by James Nelson, followed by Achillee.
It's Eric Preven from Studio City. Um, you know, I understand that we don't have a crystal ball about the population, but I think that, you know, there's sufficient risk in the, the concept of moving so many people, whether it's 1,604 plus the families into this, uh, this location. Uh, you know, I understand that people do live there, but it's voluntarily and I, I really want to emphasize that, uh, Dr. Tereshida has been installed for a very long time and was attended on the day, October 25th, 2016, when there was a, an EIR that was actually certified by the Board of Supervisors, but it was a very strange and awkward day because there was a disruption during the public meeting. We never have those at the county board. And all of the members of the public who had shown up to address the Board of Supervisors with information about valley fever, about the distance, about all the things we've been hearing about today, uh, were unfortunately blocked from the process of weighing in. So, uh, it put Dr. Tereshida in an awkward situation where she got to give a presentation about how it's treatable in a lot of the cases. But I'm just going to report from my own experience. I have a family member who does not live in the Antelope Valley, but she got some valley fever and it's nearby and it's very unfortunate because, uh, I have to say this, she is no longer herself. It was a several-year ordeal. She was treated with a shunt into the back of her head. Um, you know, we love her, she's a member of our family and she is not 100% anymore. It cost, uh, she's a professor and had some money, so it cost $3 million to treat her. Now, I'm thinking of a vulnerable Angelina who is incarcerated there and is maybe not healthy because our system of health in the jails is a progress, we're, the work on, work in progress. And I'm just thinking that we have to find a way to, 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 to recite this location and the $100 million is, is great, but it's not the full story. And in fact, there is another number out there and I'll, I'll stop, which is 156 million and rising. And now that the, uh, bidders are obviously tuning in to the issues with the escalating valley fever, the number's going to go up, not down, if we continue that. And that doesn't, yeah, that doesn't count the cost of all that transportation and all those services.
Thank you, sir.
So thank you for your time.
James Nelson, followed by Achillee, followed by Joseph Maislich.
Good afternoon, how y'all doing? I'm James Nelson with DPN and I just wanted to come up and talk about the individuals I've met in my 29 years in prison that came down with valley fever. Uh, they was mixed diagnosed, um, one of them was near death, they was putting them back in the van to take them back to prison to die. A nurse came out and asked the officer to bring them back up. One more doctor wanted to look at them. There's a good friend of mine named Ronnie Elam. I, I could bring him in here next time we have a meeting. And, um, the doctor took him up there and the doctor told him, "I can't give you no guarantees, but I could try." And he had to go through a surgery where he had to be opened up and all the fungus scraped off his spine. That's what he had to go through. And, uh, and, 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 and when he went through that though, he had, uh, he was already a good person, had already made transformation while he was doing his time, but, but he had a pivotal moment after, after that. And, uh, I could bring him, give his testimony too, to that. But, uh, I know other individuals, I know some individuals that didn't survive after they caught that valley fever. You know, it was the worst thing because after all, the medical facility and facilities, whether state or local, you get neglected. I was in there, I know. You know, they come up here, they make it sound good, you know, a campus and all that and they gonna have this, they gonna have that, you know? The bottom line is, it's a bad location. Why go into danger when you know it's possible it's danger? Around every county jail facility in prison, they have land, uh, farm land around there. So the soil is always going to be disturbed, you're going to be in there, they have swamp coolers, whatever's outside coming inside, so you're going to be inhaling it. It's a bad idea. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Achillee, fossil, followed by Joseph Maislich, followed by Anthony Robles.
My name's Ach, excuse me, my name's Achillee, I'm with the Black Community clergy and Labor Alliance and Black Lives Matters LA. And I want to talk to you about priorities. What's important? It seems like if you build it, we will fill it, is important. And I want to challenge that notion. We have spent an awful amount of time, energy and resources in locking people up. And in a society where there are four conditions that black people have to face, white supremacy, institutional racism, individual bigotry and mass denial, we are going to suffer the most when you build those facilities. There's, all the evidence supports that. But yet we still go down the same roads. Lock them up and we'll fill it. Build it and we will fill it. We ask you to take another approach. We ask you to look at investment versus punishment. Look at how we use our resources to say, how can we keep people from jail? Not how do we deal with them once they get there? That is a shift for us. To even talk in those terms is different for us because we talk about punishment first. And so what we're asking you to do, one, we oppose this, this Mariloma. But first, we want to ask you to help break the cycle of, of punishment and more punishment and look at investment in communities, investment in peoples and use the resources that we say we have as a collection and community of people to invest in people to do better so to make sure that we don't have to build, uh, Marilomas and the rest, and so we don't have to worry about valid disease. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Joseph Maislich, followed by Anthony Robles, followed by George Cameron.
Well, again, commissioners, Joe Maislich, marriage and family therapist. I think of the, uh, of course, people talked about the physical diseases, uh, just because we don't see them in the same way, the social and mental consequences are pretty important. It's an obligation for society that confines anyone to provide services like those that have been described and hopefully, although there's some doubt, be provided. It is however also true that an excellent spa with college classes and exercises and everything else, if somebody is confined there who might with proper supports and supervision be in the community, uh, then it's a human rights violation, no matter how nice that place is. Um, so, uh, please bear that in mind. Are there alternatives? The development of alternatives that was just spoken about, uh, is critically important and I would say before people have contact with criminal justice system. Yes, indeed, the hardware gets built, as, as the chair said, and the services are a permanent struggle for, uh, for funding. But I'd like to talk specifically about the numbers. When the women's jail, it was called a women's village plan at that time in, in 2013, was proposed, it was for 1,358 or so people, uh, then got elevated to 1406 in, or no, no, 1604, what is this? In, uh, in, uh, the 2014 revision of the plan, before people were talking about, um, bail reform, before the mental health diversion was even started, before the major homelessness projects that of course I think ought to be five times as big, but, um, before those started. And yet the number stays there. Well, the population of the county's going to rise, okay, but, uh, we just don't know. We're, we're not in a position to decide how many people with proper implementation of the plans that are going on will, it will be an obligation of the community to confine. We're not in a position, folks, uh, to do this investment of this kind right now. Thank you.
Anthony Robles, followed by George Cameron, followed by Mandy Maldonado.
Hello, um, again, I'm Anthony Robles. Um, so I heard all this money that's being, um, found from AB 900 and from the state and it's a few hundred million dollars to build this when we could be using these few hundred million dollars to, um, provide for quote-unquote gender responsive services for women before they're in captivity. Um, kind of like what, um, Patrice has said, um, like maybe we can invest in more sexual trauma centers, emergency shelters, healthcare, reproductive care and, um, the services and childcare and services that, that women need because the women that are being locked up, many of them are mothers, some of them are pregnant and the majority of them are the primary caretakers of the children. Now, when my father was, uh, in prison and incarcerated and sent upstate, it was, that was family separation, it was hard for me, us to visit him because he was so far away. And to lose a father is one thing, but to lose a mother, I couldn't imagine having my mother go to Lancaster. I live in the St. Gabriel Valley. Lancaster is a one and a half hour drive without traffic. So if there's some, that's completely without traffic, so it can take two to almost three hours. And imagine going there and back, that's like two and a half hours, that's like a five-hour, um, round trip. Um, that's going to be difficult for many families to go then and, and then to top it off with the, the valley fever and being exposed to valley fever. And I heard the lady say that, um, you know, they might have, they're going to have ready access to treatment and to, to, so they can have better access to care that might prevent the long-term effects while they wouldn't be exposed to valley fever in the first place if they're not being locked up there. Um, so I think the CLC, I think this commission has a, does have a special role in, um, in opposing this, this jail. And I think the CLC should come out and oppose the, the building of Mariloma and put a moratorium on all, um, jail expansion or jail renovation, um, until the community, uh, can really talk and figure out how, what we can do with the budget, um, particularly the sheriff's budget as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Cameron George, followed by Mandy Maldonado, followed by Christina Lear.
Hi, my name is Cameron George from the Youth Justice Coalition and, um, my first experience in jail, I, it didn't benefit, it didn't benefit me, didn't benefit me a lot, but I felt depressed and so far away from home, so I'm sure it wouldn't benefit the women because it, because it, it is just like, it, the money should just go to schools and shelters, they should just build things for our community. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Mandy Maldonado, followed by Christina Lear, followed by Robert Suker.
Hello, I'm Mandy from YJC and I feel about jail, the way I feel about jail is, I come at it mindfully and I feel like it should be more focused physically on the bodies. Um, there should be a real secure system that focuses on food, shelter and freedom, building more jails to, to be as, um, to me is the worst idea for many reasons, but, um, but my main idea should be more on schools, jobs, medical, medical facilities and youth programs. It's unbelievable that there are, that they're allowing jails for women right there in the valley season, valley fever area. Uh, we should keep in mind our health, the deputies, pregnant women, inmates, um, visitors, um, mothers, mothers that are locked up in there and have a family to go back to, uh, healthily. Um, also, keep in mind that it's incurable and we should push for more healthier options like down to what we eat and drink. Um, this should be encouraged, positive and will probably impact a, a better lifestyle. Health is important and must be a must. In every case, people should be advised on doing healthy things and choices. Me, having a family incarcerated, um, and incarcerated and to think they are not getting the right health that they deserve is ridiculous. So I urge the commission to recommendation, um, the deputy department to make no more jails.
Thank you, ma'am. Christina Lear, followed by Robert Suker, followed by Mateo Nagas Nagasi.
Hi, um, thank you and thank you for some of the questions that were asked. Yeah. Um, my name is Christina Lear, I live in the first Board of Supervisors district. And I just, I was thinking, I've been thinking a lot about language and, and speaking about this as a campus. It seems insane to use that word if you're not going to, you know, also say we're talking about caging people in this campus. I mean, I've taught in the youth authority camps and they're prisons, they're, they're caging people. Um, and I have a nine-year-old and her dad is currently out of town for a couple of months on a job and she's completely disoriented as a result of it. So for all intents and purposes, let's just say that I'm a single parent for the moment. Were I to end up in Mariloma jail, uh, most likely on a non-criminal offense that I haven't yet been convicted of and may never be convicted of, and you shake down how that happens, and I say this with full acknowledgement of the fact that I am not the primary candidate to end up in jail and my daughter's not the primary candidate to end up without a mother. You talk about these, you know, family-oriented programs and they talked about how they're going to work with the community when these facilities are built to talk about transportation and stuff. Why are, not talking to the community coming way before we're putting what is looking like billions of dollars when we, when we talk about after building this, we're then, uh, running them? Um, and I wanted to say also that I've been organizing for Reform LA jails, one of the pieces of which is a report investigating alternatives to this and I, I worked primarily in, in District 1, 2 and 3. I personally handed over over 25,000 signatures primarily from white, middle-class and upper-middle-class people, all of whom are baffled at the fact that we are increasing our jail beds, that we are, that we are spending billions of more dollars on this. And so I just wanted to say from the community that has not been the most vocal in fighting our system of incarceration, that there is great concern and opposition to it. Thank you for your time.
Robert Suker, followed by Mateo Nagasi, followed by Yvette Ali. Robert Suker, followed by Mateo Nagasi, followed by Yvette Ali.
Hi. Excuse me. What a pleasure to be here. Thank you so much for taking the time. I have no idea exactly what kind of jurisdiction you have or power over the decision to implement this construction. I am, did I say my name? I hope I did. Robert Suker is my name. I'm a retired teacher through the adult division of education here in Los Angeles. 27 years with LAUSD, working with primarily immigrant students, but also high school and parolees, people like this during my career. I worked at a place called Abraham Friedman Occupational Center. When I entered that program in 88, the building was, had something on the order of 10,000 students that it was serving in the center of Los Angeles. Programs, occupational programs that were compared to what is available today, extraordinary. Everything from tailoring, custom tailoring, welding, secretarial, supermarket checking, just a huge spectrum of occupational training that was taking place. That program was cut about 70% over the course of the time that I was there. What I'm essentially saying, and Ms. Cullors brought this up, I think very well. Here we are, cutting our adult education programs drastically in our own community and planning this jail facility where we're establishing a campus. I just want you to seriously consider the needs and the facilities that already exist within our community that can be remediated and expanded. Those facilities are still standing. They haven't destroyed them. I highly recommend you seriously consider this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mateo Nagasi, followed by Yvette Ali, followed by Jennifer Thule.
Hello. My name is Mateo Nagasi. And even though my shirt says Reform LA Jails, I am an abolitionist. I also, I want to start off by talking about medical treatment in prison or in jail. I have two brothers that have been in prison for 20 and 24 years respectively. My, one of my brothers has nerve damage for, for, because of years of neglect and misdiagnosis inside the prison. He's actually suing the Department of Corrections. Hopefully that works out for us. The idea that you would call something a campus, it's a jail. I mean, it's dog whistle for, you know, come on, we all know what dog whistle means. It's a jail. I've been to the private ones. I've been to, I mean, it's been in our lives for over 45 years, going to visit jails. I've seen mentally ill people laying on the floor. So you talk about giving that power to the sheriff. I've been in the jail. I've seen them laying on the floor, not even with a pillow, a tarp, people walking by them, not giving them any attention. So when you talk about getting people off the street, which is the majority of the people that we put in jails, you're not going to be treating them. You're just going to be exasperating more and more trauma. Why don't we take this hundred million and build a mental health facility and leave law enforcement out of it? Just keep taking law enforcement away from mental health and, and, and facilities where people are not well. You know, my brother was addicted to drugs when he went into prison. He's still addicted to drugs today. And he gets those drugs from correctional officers. He has a cell phone. I was texting him to see if he could give me some more information on his mental health. He got the cell phone from a correction officer. So, you know, and, and the distance things, you don't know where the family lives. My mother's 80 years old. She hasn't seen her son in 24 years. And she needs, you know, my mom is 80. She needs to see her kids. So I don't think, you know, I, I could go on, but I want to respect everybody's time.
Thank you, sir. Yvette Ali, followed by Jennifer Thule.
Hi, thank you. My name is Yvette Ali. I wanted to take a moment to address a couple of really important questions that Commissioner Ocean brought up earlier. The first is around bed count. So the narrative is that we're going to have a reduction in beds, right? But we can't separate the replacement to, to Men's Central with the Women's Jail. There are one plan. And women will be caged in both the mental health facility and in the Women's Jail. So for women, this is a jail expansion plan, first and foremost. And then the second issue that Commissioner Ocean brought up is that of reducing our jail population. Right now, 42% of the folks caged here in Los Angeles are pre-trial. With SB 10 passing, with the Board of Supervisors taking steps to implement a rigorous, a pre-trial reform plan, it is imperative that we at the very least put a halt on any jail construction until we can assess the very question that Commissioner Ocean brought up. What are the projections for the jail population in Los Angeles? If we're just taking a look at bail alone, it can be up to a 42% reduction. If we take a look at mental health diversion, if we take a look at all of the measures that have been passed that divert folks away from incarceration, that, that number could be even greater. So why are we moving forward, spending not hundreds of millions of dollars, billions of dollars on two new jails? And that's just for the construction. That's not even for the programming. Why are we spending billions when we have some set measures and plans that can already reduce our jail population? It is irresponsible fiscally and socially, and it can lead to more lawsuits for the county as folks contract diseases like Valley fever and are medically neglected. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jennifer Thule.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Thule. I live in the fourth district. I'm a member of White People for Black Lives. I was part of the Reform LA Jails ballot initiative. The thing I learned most from that work was that people desperately want reinvestment in our communities. And I opposed Mariloma jail and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of people I spoke to oppose it as well. And they want to see community reinvestment.
Thank you, ma'am. That was our last speaker.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Are we going to have any questions among ourselves? I don't know if I want to direct this to you or to our executive director. Pardon my ignorance, but have the train left the station as relates to this with BOS?
That's a good question.
I think that's a fundamental question we're trying to answer.
And what happens when a train leaves a station? Is it at its destination? I guess that's the other follow-up. Where is it? If it's left the station, is it near the destination? Yes.
I have a question. And it was a question, sort of the issue was raised by Commissioner Ocean and also one of the last speakers. And that is with the advent and the projected implementation of SB 10, the bail reform, even though that doesn't go into effect for another year, and there is much work to be done in terms of trying to figure out how it's going to be implemented. It seems at a very basic level, abundantly clear that whatever form the bail reform legislation ultimately takes, it is going to reduce jail population. So I guess my question is, does the sheriff's department or would the sheriff's department consider putting their design build, RFP and, and all of that on hold until the county has figured out what it's going to do about implementing SB 10 and the bail reform?
I could just add something because a couple of commissioners have talked about this question of jail population reducing as a result of reforms. One of the problems we have in Los Angeles County is that we currently don't have enough jail capacity to house all the people we're convicting in courts on a regular basis. So from the time I began as a DA decades ago, people served a fraction of their sentence. The sheriff is empowered to release people early from their sentences as a result of litigation regarding overcrowding. So as a constitutional matter, if his jail is overcrowded, then he may and must release people in order to make it not, whatever that definition of overcrowded is. As I've discussed repeatedly, I think our jails are overcrowded currently. I think the points that have been made about medical care are absolutely correct and they're a function of overcrowding. But the flip side of that is, because currently people are sperving assault, smaller fraction of their sentences than even when I began, even when you start releasing people as a result of a bail program, if that's how that goes, or AB 109 or other programs reduce populations, we're still going to have the same number of people in our jails. Because what's going to happen is the sheriff's going to start having them serve a higher portion. And the thing that's going to control how many people are in the jails is that determination of when we reach that overcrowding point, that constitutional marker. Now, in my opinion, we're above it, but there is no mechanism currently for that kind of assessment at the county level, independent of the sheriff deciding how many people he's going to house. So we, I don't believe we are going to see a reduction in our jail populations as a result of all these things that are talking about. I'm not saying that cuts either way as to this body. I just want to make that point. The second thing I want to point out, because the question was asked about the train leaving the station, you just got a presentation from county partners of a PowerPoint that gave nothing that isn't, hasn't been presented many times publicly, but it wasn't placed on the agenda in advance. It wasn't given in hard copy to the audience or to myself or to other county people. And in it, it said, the question that the pastor asked about, it said that this, this disease, Valley fever, is treatable and didn't have a word about curable. And when you answered, asked the question about it, I didn't feel like you got a very direct answer regarding the percentage of people who it's curable for. I got to say, that was an eye opener for me, having thought that Valley fever was just an issue that could be handled. To me, that sounds like somebody thinks the trains left the station. That's my comment on that.
Thank you. You know, we're trying to think about our role, our particular role, how we handle this with all, we have a lot of committees, we have a lot of things going on. And you had a suggestion.
The chair and I had a discussion about this. And in consideration of the number of ad hoc committees that we have and just the time constraints we're putting upon the commission members themselves, it was my suggestion that you order staff to come back with a report on what we've heard today and do some additional research and a recommendation to the commission within a 45 to 60 day period or so.
Mr. Harris?
I think that's an excellent idea. I do want to say, A, I really appreciate all the presentations today by everyone. I also really appreciate the, the manner in which the public comment was conducted. I think there was some really good information that was provided to us that we needed to hear. So I really thank you, each and every one of you, for that. And I do think this commission does need to play a role in this decision. I totally agree with Commissioner Ocean. I think there's got to be a better way for us to conduct business in the county of Los Angeles. I will speak as a former deputy sheriff. Nothing would make me happier than to think that a deputy sheriff never had to spend another day working in a jail. Now, I think I also know that that's probably never going to happen. But to the extent we can reduce the jail population, it's better for all of us collectively to do that. And I, I agree. I think this is a little premature on the question, is this train left the station? Trains can be stopped if they need to be stopped. And I'm not saying that's the situation here. I don't know. But I've heard a lot of things here today that have really given me pause to reflect on just what is the right thing for us to do. I think we should weigh into this discussion because it is vitally important to the residents of Los Angeles County, sworn and unworn alike, what happens as far as jail expansion and what's the right thing to do. I don't know that I know the answer right now, but I'm very curious to learn more before this thing gets too far down the track. So I, I agree with our executive director. I think it'd be good to have staff do some additional work. But again, I want to thank everyone who came here today, took the time to come here and provide this input. It was very, very valuable to this commissioner. And I'm sure that the commissioners here feel the same way.
Right, great. So with everyone's agreement, let's task the staff and Mr. Williams with doing some research and inquiry. And then we'll work up a mechanism so that we're included along the way about what you're, what you're coming up with. But I, I agree. I think we need to consider this and weigh in in some capacity once we know, we get some guidance from the team. Okay? All right. Thank you. So what we're going to do now is going to take a two minute break, if you can, because we're now going to move to the item of the family assistance and communication ad hoc. And we're going to move, well, so Commissioner Harris, Commissioner Ocean and myself, we're on the, on the ad hoc. We're going to move to the front here so we can address the entire audience. While we do that, if you want to take a quick break and then come right back. Thank you.